Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City Board of Education meeting. Before we have our pledge and our moment of silence, I will yield to Mr. Campbell.
I would just like for us to remember Ms. Wade and her family during our moment of silence tonight as a result of the loss of her sister this week.
We will now get ready to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by our city schools art winner for Best of Show, Mr. Dylan Rainey, and then we'll also stand in Moment of Silence in memory of one of our workers here from Murfreesboro City, Mrs. Tammy Chafalve. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would now have a motion for the approval of our agenda.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, I have a... Question?
Well, I would like to have the discussion or the approval of PER 46 taken out of the consent agenda and put in action items, please.
Okay, if you just move item PER 46 down to action items. There's a motion for the approval of the agenda. There is a second. All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Gilbert. Communication?
Good evening. Thank you very much. First, I would like to congratulate all of our art winners. We've already been introduced to Dylan Rainey, and I would like to thank the parents for their support, and also would like to thank those who attended our celebration last week here in the council chambers. We had a full house of parents and children, and it was really remarkable to see their work. So Dylan, we thank you for representing all the students of Murfreesboro City Schools and all those that participated in the art contest. So thank you very much for being here tonight.
I just wanted to say hats off to all the art teachers that work so hard with our kids. They do such amazing work, and I just have to have a moment to remember Dr. Lon Nuhl, a former board member who since passed on to the art world. But, you know, he helped move us from art on a cart to classroom art, and I'd just like to remember him.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. We would also like to congratulate Greg Wiles. He has been appointed by the governor to serve on the Volunteer Tennessee Board. I think this reflects well on Murfreesboro and the partnerships that we have in the community, but certainly appreciate Greg and his work. And we would also like to recognize Greg and also Councilman Washington, Vice Mayor Washington, excuse me, and Elma Knight, who is one of our kindergarten teachers at Armistick. They will be honored on April the 6th for the Faith Awards, and this recognizing African-Americans who have contributed to the community. So congratulations to them very much, and very proud, very proud to have them associated with the Murfreesboro City Schools and the City of Murfreesboro. And then finally, we'd like to congratulate Nancy Phillips. Nancy and Murph have been invited for the second year in a row, so she must have done well last year, and Murph must have done well too at the governor's mansion to participate in the March 28th egg roll. So those are your communications.
At this time, we'll entertain a motion for the approval of the consent items.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye. Are there any that disapprove? Thank you. Action items, Dr. Gilbert?
Yes, your action items, we have approval of board policies, and I'm going to turn that over to Ms. Baker.
Okay, I guess we'll start first with the policy that was pulled off the consent items. That's Board Policy PER 46 regarding employee use of social electronic media. That policy, as you know, is designed to help employees protect themselves when they utilize social media at work and off work. As I've indicated before, this would make sure that employees remember that the professional standards that apply to any of their conduct, public conduct, whether it be through electronic media or in the public, would be held to the same standards that it already is under the state laws and board policies. It does state, starting at line 23, that employees who use electronic media for personal purposes shall observe the following: that the employee may not set up or update the employee's personal social network pages using the district's computers, network, or equipment, and/or while performing Murfreesboro City School assigned duties; the employee shall not use the district's logo or other copyrighted material without express written consent of the district; the employee continues to be subject to applicable state and federal laws and school policy and administrative regulations when they are communicating regarding personal and private matters regardless of whether the employee is using private or public equipment on or off school grounds. That is to encompass things such as confidentiality of student records, confidentiality of health or personal information regarding colleagues or students, and confidentiality of district records, including educator evaluations, and copyright law, and also discrimination and harassment laws. The policy, starting at line 42, states that Murfreesboro City Schools is comprised of pre-K through sixth grade students. The need for an employee to use electronic media to communicate with elementary students instead of parents requires approval, and with the written permission from the director of schools or the director's designee or, and the parent or guardian of the student or faculty member may communicate via electronic media with a student, and the school principal or the principal's designee is to be included in that communication. And an employee is not subject to these provisions to the extent the employee has a social or family relationship with the student's parents. And then the last portion defines what constitutes electronic media and also what constitutes a communication.
Thank you, Ms. Baker.
Ms. Phillips?
I have some comments about this. I just want to start out by sharing with the folks at home that we, as a board, have spent a great deal of time reviewing this policy, and I want to commend my fellow board members for their very careful consideration of this policy. When we were discussing this policy, we had a lot of common ground, and that common ground is that we all want the very best interest of the children and employees of Murfreesboro City Schools, and that's a good thing. We may not always agree on what the best course to pursue for that interest is, but anyway, we do have a lot of common ground. Most of the important discussion regarding this policy was done at our study sessions, which are not currently televised. Now, of course, the public's always welcome at these study sessions, but I know that if, as a parent of an elementary child, it's very hard sometimes to give up a weekday evening to come and do this because parents are busy being parents to come and sit through meetings that are not televised. They're busy being parents. They're, you know, they're doing homework, they're getting dinner on the table, they're listening to reading, they're going to events at the school. So because of that, I just want to, and because I have such strong feelings regarding this policy, I just wanted to take a moment to share my particular concerns and objections to the policy. The policy, as Ms. Baker has explained to us, is in sections. I have no problem with the first part of the policy. My concerns come on the second page, once we start the use of electronic media with Let's see, because what it does is, and my understanding is, it gives permission for employees of Murfreesboro City Schools to contact our boys or girls and girls through social media with the written permission from the principal or designee. Is that "and" parent?
Yes, "and" parent.
Okay. Well, that doesn't, you know, electronic communication is an ever-growing tool of communication, you know? It's a very important business tool and for organizations. But I believe that the children of Murfreesboro City Schools are not, do not fall into that for me personally. That's not a matter of, it's not a business, you know? Our children, our children are our most valuable asset, and I think that they are also the most vulnerable, and we need to be very proactive in doing all we can to protect them. Because, so what this means now is, according to my understanding, is that, you know, an employee can Facebook, tweet, email, or even text a child, is that correct?
Yes.
And, or, and make comments on websites, blogs, can comment on, can respond to a comment a student made, or just make a comment in general. I want to state very clearly that I believe our employees are very much people of honor and would never communicate improperly. However, sometimes bad things do happen, and sometimes they happen right in your backyard. We all know that. Also, in a perfect world, parents would have the time or the know-how to be able to always monitor all the communication avenues open to their children. But this is not a perfect world, and very few parents have time to be such, you know, to be so a good advocate where they can check Facebook, Twitter, email, web blogs, all these other sites every single day. Now, granted, all such communications are supposed to be copied to the principal or the principal's designee, I mean, designee, but what if they aren't? What if one gets lost? What about texting? How are you going to copy that? How long is the principal supposed to keep a copy of that text on their phone? Are they supposed to then forward that text to someone else? And what about, what about the principal and the undue burden we're putting on the principals to have to monitor all these extra communications? You know, and not only are we making our children vulnerable by allowing this policy, in my opinion, Dr. Gilbert, when in the middle, when we were discussing this, shared with us as a board a couple of times that she personally knows of where accusations of wrongdoing or miscommunication, inappropriate communication have been lodged against teachers, and years later, years later. So I think we are making our teachers, putting our teachers in a vulnerable position as well, because then what does that do to their career or their reputation? So, you know, these are, these are my main objections to this policy, but I have others. Last year, we were asked to make a large expenditure for data storage in Murfreesboro City Schools coming to $125,000. We thought that would take care of our data. Because of the cost for certain other things going on in our school system, security updates at our actual facilities and other things, we, yes, we have, we are short on data, and then we were asked, and a couple of months ago, to make another large expenditure for data, and that was another $50,000. Now, all these communications that we're supposed to monitor and keep for ever knows how long, that are going to go, we have a large school system, all these different blog statements and web statements and Facebook and tweets and texts, and we've got to store all that, protect the teachers and to protect the students. I just think that's a useless waste of storage. So with all these things said, I find this policy very objectionable. I think that if we're going to do so much to try to protect the facilities that we house our students, and students can be vulnerable in many ways, they can be vulnerable in many, many ways, and I wish that we would not open the door to allowing this kind of communication. I realize that most people don't agree with me. That's okay. I just appreciate that you sat here and listened to my concerns. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Ms. Smith?
I really appreciate your concerns. I think you've brought up some seriously valid points. Would it, I know we've been through this a whole bunch, would it make you happier to minimize, the term that's being used in the lines 49 through 52 says electronic media. If we eliminated the use of electronic media to just be electronic mail, would that, that would knock out all of the Twitter, Facebook, MySpace, LinkedIn? That would, that would get rid of all of that and still allow our students to communicate the way that students communicate today?
I think that would be certainly a step in the right direction. I mean, I would be, you know, I really think that's a step in the right direction because I think that's just so much to monitor as well as to store, and I think the wider you get it, the more vulnerable, the wider that door, the more vulnerable our students are, as well as our teachers.
Mrs. Rineer?
Excuse me. As Ms. Phillips said and Mrs. Smith has said, we have beat this thing to death. We've talked about it for months on end. Some of us are not, immediately when we heard about it, we said absolutely not, this, we should not do this, we should not allow our teachers to email our students, and we were really concerned about the vulnerability of either party. In visiting schools, at the time that we first began to discuss this, I had visited eight schools, and of those eight schools, only two, either principals or teachers, told me that they used email with the students. Since then, I've visited the rest of the schools and the rest of the principals, and none of the others said that they use this medium. I still have, I side with Ms. Phillips. I still have really, real valid concerns about this. However, I don't want us to fall behind on our technology aspect. You know, things are moving ahead. What we purchase today is obsolete tomorrow. What we do today is obsolete tomorrow. So I don't want us to fall behind, so we have this catch 22. I'm unclear what I think is the best, but I'm not really in favor of this either, and I know that many of us are, so I'll certainly go with the majority or abstain.
Mr. Barrett?
I agree with a lot of what Nancy had to say. I think Collier had a valuer point with, with email, maybe that's some sort of compromise we can come to. It allows for copying to the principal, to the teachers, you know, they can keep in the loop as far as that, and that way it eliminates the Facebook, the YouTube, Google, you know, that's a lot of data, and like, that's a valid point, you know, it's, we've got to store that for, you know, in case there's something that happens and we need to access that, so.
Okay. Was there anyone else? Mr. Campbell?
So Nancy, what you're suggesting, if I understand correctly, is to tell teachers and employees that they should not communicate with their students through the electronic media, Facebook, Twitter, so forth and so on?
I have no problem with them communicating with the parents if they need to do something. I personally don't think they should, they should communicate directly with the children because the children are so young. Now, I like Collier's, what do you call it? Compromise. I mean, I think it would be easier to monitor because I think there's so much to monitor with all this stuff as well as store. If it were just email, it would certainly be easier to monitor.
Mr. Campbell?
I won't disagree with you. I think that the avenue of the direct email, I've always said that is a lot better than putting something on Facebook because then the entire world can see that, or Twitter or whatever else. I would be in favor of asking, or making this policy state that our employees need to only communicate with, I'd almost be willing to say only communicate with the parents and leave the student side out of it, because that's where you get into more problems now, in today's world, anyway. It wasn't that way back when some of us were in school, certainly, but that would not be a bad, bad idea either.
Ms. Rineer?
When I read through this policy again this afternoon, I noticed that online, I believe it's 30, because I've put annotated notes on here, it's covered up my numbers, but I think it's line 30 where it talks about the employee continues to be subject to applicable state and federal laws, MCS, school board policies, and any administrative regulations, even when communicating regarding personal and private matters, whatever, whatever. Under administrative regulations, could that be interpreted as the, excuse me, as the school principal? Because could that, could that then be their decision whether or not the teachers would communicate with students by email? Could we make it their decision?
If the principal, if the student is going to communicate with a child by email, then I want the principal copied.
Right, but what I'm saying is, could a building principal say, yes, you may, or no, I don't want you to communicate with students? Under this line, is that, Ms. Baker, perhaps you can answer that question? Under administrative regulations, does that mean Dr. Gilbert as being the administrator, or could it be the building principal?
Well, when it was initially drafted, administrative regulations dealt with those administrative, that was meant to encompass the administrative directives issued by Dr. Gilbert as the director of schools. You could, if the board desired to include any rules or policies issued by principals, we could do that. I think the intent was to create a policy and procedure that was consistent across retired districts.
Right.
That's why we would prefer that it
Say that one.
Come from an administrative directive, so it was consistent across the district. I'll defer to Dr. Gilbert.
I think if you don't have it consistent across the district, you're going to have problems, because you're going to have children move, and you have teachers move, and the one thing that I have found that administrators in this district consistently want is the consistency, even probably more than, than I do. So I think in this situation, when you have teachers whose reputations can be called into questions, and I do want to clarify one thing, Ms. Phillips referenced my, my communicating to the board, that there are instances out there, and there certainly are instances out there, where there has been inappropriate communication between teachers and students. That has not been the case in Murfreesboro City, of which I'm aware.
Oh, that's true.
But I think there's no question that, particularly in, in school districts, and we've seen that in, on the television news and other places where we have had those instances, which is one reason that I insisted on the, the principal being, being copied, because I think this, in my opinion, this directive is as much to protect teachers as it is to protect the children.
Right. Mr. Campbell?
Well, I was just going to say the same thing Dr. Gilbert said. I think if, I don't think we need to leave it up to each individual principal, not that they're not capable of doing so, but I think it needs to be a standard policy for the entire school system. And I, I'm going to make a motion. That's all right with you? Dr. Brown?
Well, you can.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I was just going to say that we have discussed this policy for an extended period of time, and we cannot prevent teachers from contacting students by email. It doesn't matter what type of policy we set up, doesn't matter what kind of guidelines we have. What we can do is have guidelines that control the circumstances under which those guidelines can be used, and that's why I think we need a policy for this. I think it does protect the student and the teacher, so. So I would make a motion that we approve the policy, and I'm willing to change the policy on line 51 to say via electronic mail or email.
I'll second that.
There's a motion, second question?
I have comments.
Okay. Yours is comment. So are there any questions before we ask for a vote?
So what that means is, Dr. Brown, you're saying that they're going to communicate with the students?
Via email.
Via email only?
Right.
As far as we know?
Yes, sir.
With the stipulations that are there.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Is all minds clear on the change? Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Call the roll, Ms. Ridley.
I have a comment.
Okay, before we vote, you want, go ahead.
I do. I want to make a comment. I disagree with Dr. Brown because I think that policy does set the standard for behavior for the, and there's something wrong if your, if your employees are not following your policy. I believe that policy is very important and that, and that our employees should follow the policy, and by having a policy, whatever the policy is, it, it's, it clearly states your expectations for the employee. So I just wanted to clarify that. I think you can stop it by policy.
Thank you. Phillips. Ms. Ridley, do call the roll.
Ms. Barrett?
Yes.
Dr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Rineer?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Wade? Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
I just want to thank you, everybody, because I think that the change that you came together in consensus to make it electronic media, I want to thank Ms. Smith for her suggestion. I think that was a wonderful compromise, and I really appreciate that, and I just think that we've done good work with that, and I want to thank everyone.
All right, thank you all. Now we're down to Ms. Baker with STU 4.
Okay, the next policy that you have before you tonight for second reading is Board Policy STU 4, entrance age. This policy you approved at the last policy session on first reading due to the fact we needed to have it implemented prior to the beginning of kindergarten registration. This policy was revised to reflect changes in state law regarding the interest, entry age for kindergarteners. The policy now reads, entry age for kindergarten, children entering kindergarten for the 2013-2014 school year shall be five years of age on or before August 31st. Students shall be five years of age on or before August 15th for all school years thereafter, meaning beginning in the 2014-2015 school year, and students that attend a state-approved preschool during 2012-2013 school year and are five years of age on or before September 30th are also eligible to attend. That is the change they've made to state law, and this policy was revised to reflect that change.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Are there any questions from the board before we entertain a motion for approval? Ms. Smith?
I'm sorry, I know educators know the answer to this, but where's a state-approved preschool?
That would be, they have listed the preschools that they approved. It's preschools that have been certified by the Tennessee Department of Education. It could include a Head Start program, a public school, preschool offered by a public school system or private school. They have different certification programs.
So the little, the churches that offer early childhood education, would they, some of those be state-approved?
They are in the process right now. There's actually a bill that has been passed, it's passed the House and Senate, that will stipulate what a state-approved preschool is. I think with this verbiage on that, in fact, I was in contact with the state this morning about it, I think with this verbiage on it, what we will need to do then is stipulate in administrative directives because they, those may change, but basically the state lays out and is very specific in the law about what is a state-approved preschool. So I think that, that this board, by choosing state-approved preschool, that language, then it will cover however the law changes. If it doesn't, then we'll bring it back to you.
Okay, did I answer for you, Ms. Smith?
As much as it can.
And right, and right now, Ms. Smith, the state is looking at that. They, they actually, when, when the law was changed regarding kindergarten, they had to go back and, and correct the law regarding preschool, and they've done that with a couple of bills. Those bills have just recently passed, and the state board is going to have to lay out in the State Department of Education exactly what those are stipulated to be as far as pre-Ks, and they're in the process of doing that right now. So I expect for us to hear something in the next couple of weeks at least from, from the state, but with this verbiage, then that will cover us and will allow those children to access our kindergartens who need to be able to do that and who legally can.
Right. If there are no other questions or comments, we'll entertain a motion?
So moved.
A second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Well, we're down to reports and information.
And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Anderson at this point.
I wanted to bring you up to speed on the construction and renovation update for the district. If any of you've had a chance... If any of you have had a chance to drive by Hobgood, you've seen that the walls are coming up out of the ground over there. It looks pretty good coming up right now. Ninety percent of the load-bearing walls are up, and the steel beams have been started. They are about 30 days behind on construction because of weather delays, but they still expect to have the building completed on time. Once they get undercover, under roof, they will be moving along very quickly. The next project is Bradley Elevator. As you know, we are putting an elevator in that school. The work on that one will begin on May 28th, right after school is out. On the inside of the building, we will start outside construction because the elevator will be actually part on the outside of the building, and then just the doors will open on the inside. And that will be started on April 3rd. It is in an area of access, kind of in the middle of the school, so it's in a good location. It's not right there by the classrooms because of where it's located in the hallway. And that should be done by July 18th. We will still be able to have our ESP program at that school during the summer because they will not close off the whole hallway, so we should still be able to function under that. Mitchell Nielsen Elementary Gym is getting a new roof on it. Construction will begin as soon as school is out and should be completed by July 28th. As you know, that roof there was the same design and construction as what we had over the office area when last year we had all the issues where the rain came in on that. So we're trying to get a head start on it before it happens and get that one redone. So that one should be also completed by the summer. Parking lot resurfacing. We have been given permission to resurface four of our parking lots. The city council approved the money for us to move forward on that. We are working with the city's maintenance department, I mean, street department, to redo those. And they are Mitchell Nielsen Elementary, Mitchell Nielsen Primary, Discovery School, and Bellwood. We'll have those redone this summer, and we will stage those in over the summertime and move them around in section by section. So we still should be able to have our programs running at those schools as well. The next program is our front door entrance security locks and the audio/video system. We are finishing up the last schools. They are ready to go online right after the break, and we'll be able to have those monitors and working with the buzz-in system for security purposes. So that should be activated right after spring break. The last construction project, obviously, is our new school. We have completed two of the reports. They are doing five reports total. We added an extra one, which I'll explain to you in just a minute. The geothermal boundary topography and the geothermal conductivity reports. And we also added a seismic test. Seismic test was added because it will help us in case there is any kind of earthquake movement in our area. The cost of that was $2,000. The study came back, and because we did that test, we are saving $40,000 in construction costs. Because it hit a certain level of where we don't have to do certain things in the building because it's not needed. So that was a tremendous saving. The one that everyone's been looking forward to seeing, the one on the geotechnical, that came back today, and we have the report in hand. And what it says is, during our site visit, we did not encounter any areas that indicate any sinkhole activity. That is excellent news. And they went on further to say, it is our opinion that the site can be developed, and the degree of risk associated with a sinkhole development is no greater than at this site than at any other site of geologic setting. So we are very, very thankful that those have come back. We're also anxious to get back the one on geothermal. They have not started that one yet because the machinery that they go in there with to do that couldn't get into the land because of all the rain. As soon as it dries out a little bit, they'll be doing that study. So we're very excited that it looks like everything is moving forward now very well. Obviously, the boundary study will be done to close out all the deals that they need to make on the transfer of the property. And the topographic study will be done, and that's basically the lay of the land, how they'll lay things out on it. But that's the building construction update. If anyone has any questions about where the projects are or where we stand, I'll be glad to answer them.
Mr. Campbell?
Explain to me what you're talking about when you say resurfacing the parking lots.
Our parking lots are to the point where we have some big potholes and a lot of cracks in it. They're going to come back and fill in all those and put a layer of asphalt over the top of that. Not just a skim, it's going to be a layer of asphalt.
Okay.
As a parent, I want to thank you for that.
I saw your tire in one of those.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Anderson?
Thank you. The next report is your revenue and expenditure report. On that, we are definitely over the black line here. We're at $2,400,000. Last year at this time, we were $300,000. We had just crossed. We were well a month ahead of where we were last year. I don't want everybody to get excited about that yet because things do tend to come in in waves. So I just wanted to make sure everybody's aware of that. But the other good news on the revenue side is our sales tax collections are up $256,000 over last year at this time. And of course, is a good sign of the economy coming strong in the Rutherford County and Murfreesboro area. We also have, now that the property tax has leveled off, we'll get some more in, of course, but it's kind of leveled off. We're up, but not as much as we were earlier because now everyone had to turn everything in by February 28th. So things are starting to come in and leveling off. We're at the 66.7% of the year, and we have, in revenue, collected 64.6. So we're a little bit behind, and that's because we put our projections up a little bit higher. We're still comfortable with where we are on our revenue projections. Last year at this time, we were at 65.8, but we still feel comfortable with that. What makes it even better is that in our expenditure side, we're only, expenditure side at 59.7% on the 66.7, whereas last year at this time, we were at 64.8. So we're feeling good about that as well. Some of the percentages have balanced out. As I mentioned to you, when we changed software programs, some were reporting to the wrong categories. We have fixed the vast majority of those, and it's much, much more aligned with your percentages now of where they should be. So we're feeling good about those particular things as well. If anyone has any questions about the financial report, be glad to answer them.
You have a question? Ms. Rehne?
I know I keep asking these kind of questions, and maybe I just can't get a handle on it. Where then, like this net income, where is that going? Is that what we're putting into our quote-unquote "general fund"? Or is this just sits there until the operating budget, the bills come in? How does this work?
Right. What that is, it's kind of like, if you look at it as a cash flow analysis...
Right.
It's where we are the year as far as our revenues versus our expenditures. The money stays in our bank account because we need that money when we don't have it, like, beginning of the year when we're down.
Right.
We need that money to pay our payrolls and everything like that. We work on a... If you looked at it on a graph...
Kind of in arors.
If you look at it on a graph, you would see that how our cash needs are really high at one time, then they go down. So we look to cross over that line in January, February, March, and we've obviously crossed over the line now to have the positive cash in the bank.
Okay. Another question I have on the expenditures under 72110, I guess that is under attendance.
Yes.
The percentage now is 48.1 as opposed to 71.1 last year. Would we not have, because of growth, where does our growth money go? Or has that come in?
Growth money comes in in a revenue line. These are the expenditure lines.
Okay.
Revenue comes into us, and it goes into one big account. The expenditures are the things that are broken out individually.
Okay. What about race-to-the-top funds?
Race-to-the-top funds come in from the state funding as other state revenues. We are in our, we have one more year of that...
Right.
After this year, and then that amount would go away.
And where is that on our... Is it on a line item?
It's in the revenue, it's on the revenue side, and it'll come in under other state, I believe is how it's reported. Other state funds, 46990. Other state funds.
And where we... Because I noticed there's a large, what, 16% difference there this year compared to last year. Is that what we're expecting, or are you expecting more?
No. The column in the, where it has YTD, REV, that's year-to-date received, that's the one that shows how much money's come in. There's more things that report into that other than just that one particular account.
Okay.
And if I could say something about that, remember that race-to-the-top was a four-year...
Right.
And we did not expend funds, nor were we expected to spend funds equally. So on the front end, we really front-loaded with some things, with some professional development that we needed. We had, last year, if you remember, we had some extra tutors for ELL students and some things that we really felt like that we needed to front-load to give our teachers the professional development. So now what you have out of there is you have actually two salaries that are left for this year and next year. So we're not expending those kinds of funds, and we knew that we wouldn't be on the front. We knew we needed that the first two years more than we would the last two.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Questions? Okay. The next report is your enrollment report. We are still 73 students over the budgeted amount that we have, which is obviously good news. We're 263 students over the first day of the previous year, and we're 224 over the last day of last year in enrollment numbers. Our PTR in K through 3 is at 19.0 to 1. In 4 through 6, it's 20.74 to 1. And our overall PTR is 19.62. That's excellent pupil teacher ratios now for the district, so we're very pleased with that.
Ms. Rehne?
I'm going to be the devil's advocate here. Even though, I hope the public understands that even though these figures look and sound great, we still have schools that are, I don't want to say suffering, but certainly their pupil T-shirt ratios are quite high. I know scales and peters where our growth is are certainly dealing with lots of children and probably will have more next year. So I know in one school, their numbers are high in one particular grade level, and the grade level below them has two more classes than that grade level. So there's going to be an issue next year, I think. So, you know, it's great to hear pupil teacher average ratios, but they're not really necessarily what's happening in each school.
Right.
Each school stands alone in each grade level. The ratios are established by state law that says you've got to take the average per school of the K through 3, but the class, individual class size cannot exceed another number. For example, we've got to keep an average in K through 3 in a school of 20, it's actually 20.49 to 1. But it allows for one class to go up to 25 in one grade category. So we obviously try to keep it well below those numbers. And in 4 through 6, the state says the average can be 25 to 1 with allowable grade level to be up to 30 to 1.
Right.
So, yes, you're right. When you look at the grand mix of the thousands of kids, it works out as an average. And if you break it down, school by school, grade by grade, class by class, yes, we do have some that are higher than others.
Yes. Well, that was just, you know, I just want the public to realize that there are some situations in some schools where those numbers are rather high compared to maybe another school where there are 10 children less per classroom.
Right. And sometimes, there are usually a couple of factors that can affect that, too. One is the principal's choice, for example.
Right.
You could move, and I'm looking at a school here that has 25 students in the sixth grade, that teacher could be moved down to, say, second grade, and you wind up in that particular grade level with a 21 to 1 ratio. But that principal has chosen to leave it at 18, which I certainly respect that. In other cases, you have schools that may only have two or three classes to a grade level. And so when you take the number that appear to be high for that particular grade level, but yet if you drop it and add a student, then you get too low. So it's always an adjustment.
It is. Thank you.
Ms. Phillips?
I have a question, Mr. Anderson. Now, they used to, I don't think they still do that, but I just want to be sure. When they say pupil teacher ratio, are they including the art teacher and the music teacher in those ratios, and the gym teacher?
These are direct classroom, regular ed instruction. It does not include those. Now, we used to keep another category, which kind of skews it because it shows all professional employees. And based on the responses that I receive from you, that we really didn't need to show that because you want to know how many were in each classroom, each grade level.
Okay. That's what I was wondering, to make sure.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there any other questions about enrollment?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Is there any other business you'd like to bring up that you want to be on the agenda for our study session? For our policy session in two weeks? Here are none? Nothing else on the paper? Is there anyone?
I'd just like to add one thing. I just finished the inaugural Murfreesboro Citizens' Academy, and I learned a lot about the city and about our government. And I just want to encourage our citizens out there that if they want to step up and take this class, it's open to everybody in the city. So next time it's offered, I encourage you to take it. I learned a lot. And we have a lot of dedicated employees in the city that love what they do and dedicated to our city. So I just want to thank them for their time. I know Ron had a good hand in that. I want to thank him for doing that. And Manon was there, too, at our inauguration ceremony. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Thank you for taking that class and sharing it with us. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We adjourn.